Ladies and gentlemen, this is the June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the planning and zoning board. If you would all rise for Mr. Excuse me. For Mr. Wilder to lead some prayer. Much will lead us to place of flag.
Y'all by with us. Dear Lord, we thank you for yet another beautiful day. We thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us here in Columbia County in Georgia and in this great nation of ours. We ask that you look over us tonight, uh, guide us, help us to do the right thing by the folks, help us to determine in our decisions. We ask that you look over everyone here tonight, give them safe passage back home after their, their journey here. And all these things in Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the planning and zoning board. If you would all rise for Mr. Excuse me. For Mr. Wilder to lead some prayer. Much will lead us to place of flag.
Y'all by with us. Dear Lord, we thank you for yet another beautiful day. We thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us here in Columbia County in Georgia and in this great nation of ours. We ask that you look over us tonight, uh, guide us, help us to do the right thing by the folks, help us to, uh, determine in our decisions. We ask that you look over everyone here tonight, give them safe passage back home after their, their journey here. And all these things in Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the planning and zoning board. If you would all rise for Mr. Excuse me. A minute. Yeah. I forgot to read this little part.
You sure did.
Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is recommended by the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and various requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on July the sixth, two thousand twenty-one. If you wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden to obtain a request to speak for them. Now, Butler.
All right. This is, it is an individual plat of six seventy-five Mullins Colony Drive. It is, uh, point zero, point eight acres, currently zoned C-two general commercial. It's creation of one lot. Staff recommends approval of the request. This is the location of the property. So what we're looking at is what's outlined in red here on both sides of this. We're gonna be subdividing out a little piece of, for this, uh, existing foundation. It says it's owned a property in, in C-two. You have a, a good mixture around it of, of, uh, some residential to the north and also more commercial as well. And it shows the aerial view of the site. Um, again, we're dealing with this little piece right here, as you'll, as you'll see on the plat here in a moment. It shows the, the plot of the property. We're dealing with lot I-one, which is being created tonight. Uh, the reason y'all are seeing this is when, when they did the, uh, the plats for Mullins Colony, they went through the minor plat process. Anytime that, uh, and whenever you do that, it has basically a five-year, uh, moratorium where it has, has come up for the planning commission to ask for, for us to, uh, um, set about a lot further. So they set about the properties in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. Now they're back in twenty twenty-one. Uh, they get approval for this one lot here. And again, the staff recommends approval of the request.
Is there any questions for the staff? Might they entertain a motion to approve or disapprove of this, your plat for Mullins Colony?
I make a motion to approve the in, the individual plat for, uh, Mullins Colony, Lot One, located off Washington Road.
Second. Any other comments? All in favor of signature, if I were raising your right hand. Also, before we go any further, the reason we're shorthanded tonight, we had, uh, one of our commissioners had some personal problems with his death of a child, and he resigned from this board, and nobody else has been appointed yet. County Commissioner does that appointment. And Mr. Jim Cox, our chairman, had shoulder surgery yesterday, and he's at home recovering. So that's the reason we're shorthanded. Thought I'd pass that on. Okay, the next item is Nana Mystery.
Thank you, sir. This is a minor pod revision, and the location is Trade Center Drive on one point seven six nine acres, and the current zoning is planned unit development. This is a minor revision for, um, a site layout change. This is the location off Evans-Talox Road and the, uh, current zoning, which is PUD. And this is the aerial. So the red boundary is the, the PUD development, so several parcels have been developed already. And we're looking at the, the section that's, um, outlined in yellow. Here is a plat of the property and street views, um, showing the sign on the corner and then the, um, Evans-Talox view as well. So this, uh, PUD was approved in twenty nineteen, and, um, it's a series of, uh, buildings around a, a courtyard. Um, the uses are still the same with the retail village with the commercial professional residential as part of the pod. And this was the concept that was approved at the time. This is the site plan that went with that. It shows the, um, layout of the buildings around the courtyard. And this is the current concept plan that shows, um, a shift in the buildings around here. They've now followed the, um, the road frontage and created a, a much bigger, um, courtyard Predevelop was, um, development meeting was met with staff, um, on June eighth, and the applicant and the engineer were present to discuss the reasons for the change, which is coordination of utility services, infrastructure, and fire regulations. And the minor revision includes better organization of the parking layout and a more functional courtyard space, which improves the overall design. Um, this is the, uh, location on the future, future land use map, which is in the Evans Activity Center, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, the, uh, the buildings stay the same. They're gonna be retail on the bottom and apartments on top, concept.
Yes, same as it was approved in twenty nineteen.
Other comment?
People will come talk about that?
Sorry?
That in your report? Must've been hearing something.
Might they entertain a motion to approve or disapprove this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ-two-one-zero-six-zero-eight, minor pod revision off Trade Center Drive revising the approved site plan.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of signature, if I were raising your right hand. Mr. is the next item.
Yes, sir. This is another, uh, minor revision to the S-one zoning on fifty-sixty High Meadows Drive on two point three-three acres, and the current zoning is S-one special, and it's a request for revision to facade materials. This is the location on the corner of Columbia Road and High Meadows Drive. This is the S-one zoning that was approved in twenty nineteen for a self-storage facility. Closeup of the aerial. And the three-D aerial shows the location, the context. You've got the church on the left, and then you've got the, um, concrete plant on the right. These are the current views along Columbia Road and High Meadows Drive. And here is the concept plan that was approved, and the three-story, um, high building is the climate control facility with the other two buildings, um, for self-storage. And the rendering and elevation that was approved at the time that showed a professional look that the applicant was, um, trying to achieve with the three-stories building, um, using glass, stucco, brick, and onings. And this is the current rendering that was, um, uh, sent in for this, uh, minor revision. Um, so the applicant is going for a clean look, um, to have a modern look to storage buildings here, and, um, colors will be white and teal, and the materials will be brick, uh, stucco, and, um, these are the two elevations that face the public road frontages. So the request for the change is to allow more metal on the two elevations that face, uh, uh, the inside streets. The top elevation meets the current zoning, uh, requirements, and the bottom one is the rear elevation that will have, um, other single-story buildings in front of it. Shows that there is more metal on there. Um, the stucco and brick facade does wrap the corners, so it kind of gives a better look to the, uh, views as you drive down the street. And they will be using a metal trellis to break up the elevation as well. This is the future land use map. It's close to the community crossroads, and staff recommends approval.
Any other comments or questions? Might they entertain a motion to accept or deny RZ-two-one-zero-six-zero-nine?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ-two-one-zero-six-zero-nine, minor S-one revision at five-zero-six-zero High Meadows Drive to approve changes in the building materials and elevations.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, if I were raising your right hand. Ladies and gentlemen-
So your, your motion was for conditions? There, there are no conditions.
No conditions?
There are no conditions.
All right. I revise my motion to approve without conditions.
All in favor of signature, if I were raising your right hand. Ladies and gentlemen, we are entering the public hearing, a part of this agenda tonight. There'll be an opportunity for someone to speak for against any one of these next items. So when the time comes, if I ask you, are there anybody, is anybody ready to speak, you would be coming to the microphone and state your name and address, please. First item on the agenda is Mr. Butler.
Thanks, a request for rezoning, uh, from R-one and C-one, neighborhood, R-one single-family and C-one neighborhood commercial at one-twenty Lewiston Road and Columbia Road. Request again is a rezoning to C-two. This is the location of the property, again, at the intersection of Lewiston and Columbia Road. And the zone of the property, again, you have some that are, are two properties that are split zones, C-one and R-one. This one is in R-one as well. And across the street, you have a, a grocery anchor, planned unit development, and then a gro, a, uh, convenience store here, and then a, uh, church on the opposite corner. So again, ki- kind of an interesting collection of zonings around the area. This aerial view of the site, again, is undeveloped currently with a, a, uh, house there as well. And the plot of the property and the site on Lewiston, again, there's currently a widening project there. So there's a, a few, uh, or, orange barrels I think we're all familiar with, also Columbia Road. So what has been provided with the concept sketch? Uh, we're not considering this as a, you know, to get approval as a concept or any kind of vesting of, of the design itself. Uh, there is some, um, issue with the site itself or with the, uh, design, primarily with the buffer at the back of the property. That's shown as a twenty, it should be a thirty-foot. Uh, again, you could fit everything they're showing on the property onto this, this development. Um, but, you know, again, we're not saying that will be developed exactly the way that we're seeing it this evening. Again, they show us a grocery store, um, a convenience store, and a, uh, a quick lube there. Again, all, all uses that are allowed under C-two, uh, but again, not being considered as a concept this evening. Uh, in terms of zoning itself, uh, one of the things that's a little interesting with, uh, basically this, this hearing, uh, is that we had on Tuesday, uh, the new, uh, new update of Vision Twenty, Vision Twenty, Vision Twenty Thirty-five, uh, was approved, and that is particular, particularly interesting for this property, uh, because current, or, or what it was, was under review, uh, this is within a community crossroad, uh, which has some argument for different uses in it than, than the, uh, the new one does. Um, however, from our standpoint, uh, this would allow for both, uh, uh, under the, let me, let me go back here. So u- under the old Vision Twenty Thirty-five, it's a community crossroad, it has uses in there that could be C-one, you could argue for C-C. Uh, C-two is one that may or may not really fit that, that requirement. However, this property here, uh, with the anchor, with the, uh, grocery anchored, uh, development, kind of tips into being, yeah, you could have C-two on this corner. With the revised, uh, Vision Twenty, Vision Twenty Thirty-five, uh, this changes this into an activity center, which if we're looking at, you know, kind of what this looks like, um, Evans is an activity center, um, down Lewiston Road at the, uh, I, uh, I-twenty is an activity center. So again, you can have a lot more C-two uses, a lot more, you know, kind of regional, um, destinations, uh, for people to go to. Uh, so in that, in that, in that respect, you know, the request for C-two really meets both of those requirements. Uh, so the other thing too is that, uh, within the current Vision Twenty Thirty-five, uh, there is, within the, the community work pla, work plan, I'm not really gonna get into what, or all that is, but there is a desire to put, um, design guidelines on, on this intersection, and that's supposed to be done basically next year. Uh, we don't really have time to do that in a week. So one of the things that we've done is we have brought in some of the conditions, uh, from the Crowver Development, uh, down, now further down Lewiston Road, um, to kind of make sure that these kind of fit together in some respects in terms of architecture, overall design, uh, just kind of keep them somewhat consistent, and also kind of provide it where there's a, uh, a, a theme throughout the whole, whole area. We decided to recommend approval with conditions. Uh, the first one is building elevations, architectural finishes, approved by the planning commission, basically come up for you guys, includes accommodation of bricks, stone, and stucco. Uh, metal can be used as a roof material, all in all, no more than twenty-five percent of any elevation. Uh, buildings and usage should be interconnected by ADAC compliance, silo, silo network where, where possible. Uh, screening of outdoor dumpster pads and tra, trash sub, subcules. And also we have a condition in regards to chain link fencing, and also freestanding signs, we monitor base with a baseline higher than four feet from finished grade. Again, these are all drawn from the Crowver Development, um, from, that's where, where we got in these conditions. And that includes staff recommendation.
Questions of the staff? Is anyone here that would like to speak for this issue?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm Jim Price, WTC Enterprises out of, uh, Sage Valley Golf Club. My address is one oh-seven Flow and Well Road. I have a farm on Addis Stowe River, uh, toward Wagner, South Carolina. Um, here representing the petitioners and buyers on this particular property. Uh, we look, currently looks to me as if it fits your Twenty Thirty-five plans. Uh, we think this is a commercial node. We've asked him for C-two, and that, that gives us some opportunities with ancillary uses. Uh, we'll point it out what we are looking at now, at the three credit tenants looking at this property, so that we're, we're here for the rezoning, we'll be bringing the plan back that will conform to codes ordinances and the conditions that have been placed on it. There is an opportunity that this project could grow a little bit in the Georgia Power Raps property. And, uh, there's some opportunity maybe to buy some of that, but we don't know that's the case. We do know that we have this under control now and are ready. Answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Yeah, if you, if you work a deal with Georgia Power, um, what, what would that additional land be for, to make, to make that fit better, or maybe add another building?
But, uh, there's significant topo on the property, and, uh, the way it sits now, uh, I would envision pretty severe retaining walls on the property, uh, we think that we could utilize some of that property to do some slopes, reduce the retaining walls, uh, could add a few shops beside the grocer.
That could possibly change this layout, 'cause it's all just kind of tentative.
Yes, very little. I mean, it, it would certainly have to shift toward, uh, the, what I would call the eastern side.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone here that would like to speak against this issue? That being the case, I entertain a motion to approve or disapprove of this issue.
Make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ-two-one-zero-six-zero-five, R-one to C-one to C-two at Lewiston and Columbia.
Right. Second. All in favor of signature, if I were raising your right hand. Anamis? Thank you, sir. Uh, next item is Daniel Montgomery.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning at one oh-four Preakness Drive and thirty-nine fifty Evans to Locks Road, rezoning from R-two, single-family residential and C-one neighborhood commercial to entirely C-one neighborhood commercial. This is the location of the two properties on the south side of Evans to Locks Road, um, just west of Furious Ferry. And currently, uh, we have one parcel entirely zoned R-two and one parcel split zoned C-one and R-two. Um, you can see around this intersection, most of the commercial zoning is C-one, is the, the lighter neighborhood commercial, um, with the, the planned unit development across the street being the, the larger shopping center in this area. This is the aerial of the site, again, they are currently undeveloped properties, and the street view showing the existing site. And this is the view along, um, Evans to Locks Road and along Preakness Drive. Uh, the applicants have submitted a development plan with this request. Um, if this property is rezoned, it will fall within the Evans to Locks Furious Ferry Node Protection Overlay District. Um, that overlay district has specific requirements for site design, for architecture, for building layout, pedestrian orientation, um, and o- other standards that this site plan does not currently meet. Um, so this plan will not be the, the final site development, uh, plan for this property. So this is a kind of general information only, but the, the actual development will, will not look like this. In terms of future land use, this, these properties are in the Evans to Locks Activity Center. Um, this is a commercial center on the future land use map, um, intended for, uh, retail restaurants, um, office uses, which are very typical of the, the C-one zoning that's being requested. Um, the nodes are intended to, or the activity centers are intended to be denser, more pedestrian-friendly areas. Um, the node protection overlay district, uh, is intended to create that type of design. So with the, the site plan being controlled by the, the overlay district requirements, it can meet the, the intent of that activity center to be neighborhood commercial and be more walkable, more pedestrian-oriented. Um, staff is recommending approval of this request.
Questions of the staff? Is anyone here that would like to come forward and speak for this issue?
Yes, um, my name is Kenneth Wardinsky. I'm with the Zell Engineering Firm, representing the developer, West.
Tell your name, please, for her. Last, could you spell your last name for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we do appreciate that summary and believe that, uh, I really don't feel like it'd add a whole lot, other than that the, um, intent of the property meets the request that we have, and we will definitely, in the final design, meet the requirements of future vision of the, that particular area. And yes, you know, approval of the rezoning would be in line with future development intent of that area. Effectively request, you know, the approval change.
Do I have any questions?
Yeah, have you got, uh, got a lot of buildings planned there? Have you got any requests? Have you got any interest already from, from prospective tenants?
Um, no.
Are, are any of them gonna be set up with grease traps and backflow and all that so that it could be a restaurant?
Um, the intent was to have a, a restaurant in there, and we would probably have to provide that, yes. The, that's part of the intent of the, the overlay plan, the, for the architectural style, and we believe it's, it's a very good, uh, concept, and I think it would be a really nice area if it were developed that way.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Is anyone that would like to come up and speak against this issue?
Um, my name is Mike Palladi. I have a unit at two-eleven Steeplechase, and most of you here know me, and you know that I also develop commercial property, so I'm not commercial development for the rezoning itself, but I saw, when I saw the site plan, I realized that it's gonna have to be based on node overlay protection district. But I guess one of the thing, one of the biggest things that concerned me, I noticed that the public road in this particular one, you know, shows it being closed at, uh, Evans to Locks Road, and a new road established. And I couldn't tell from this concept plan, I would assume, I mean, I guess that's the question for the applicant, is that a, that now be a public road that would be needed back to the county?
We, we can answer that. Um, that's, that's, the intent would be that they would relocate. This would be abandoned, this part would be abandoned. This would be constructed as a public access, because one of the things we've got is traffic engineering has identified this as the distance needed to be away from the new aligned inter, intersection. It also will align with the adjacent property to the north whenever that future development occurs. So that's part of the reason why this would not take place until this road was constructed and ready for dedication.
Right, and since that other property now on the other side, I don't, I think I saw that it was under contract, so now full traffic study will get done there and determination made about whether that needs a light or whether that-
Yeah, I'd, I suspect this will probably, this will be full movement, but not signalized would be my, be my expectation at this point. Obviously, this is signalized here, but the road improvements that are gonna take place would force this to be the minimum distance back away to allow full movement and provide it for both sides of the road. And that's part of the reason why they did that.
And then the road would be a public, it'd have same, right-ofways, county right-ofways.
That's correct. That's, that's our understanding.
No, this would be done in engineering stuff.
A- absolutely. Yeah, that would be part of the future development of this site.
Boy, anything could definitely be done, that would be done. Right, okay. And then I guess the other thing, just, and I've run into these on my commercial developments, if there's a dumpster pad, you know, presidential, were to be restaurants, that, that would be located away from as far as possible presidential units. And with the landscape buffers, one thing I noticed about this, you know, one of the landscape buffers provided is really this site plan, shows that landscape buffer underneath the power line. But he knows Georgia Power only allows a very minimum, and they'll cut it down. And so I think there's, you know, I saw that in the comments, that that was something that had to be considered, but I think great if that was on the other side of the power line to provide adequate screening. And I guess the, the other final thing is just, you know, elevations of these buildings, they're gonna be seen from just about every side, you know, the backside of them. You're gonna see them from both our neighborhood, but you're also gonna see them from Furious Ferry as a major corridor coming into the town center, and I would hope that the same materials under the, the node overlay would-
Yeah, I mean, the M-Pod has some pretty, pretty, pretty good standards. I mean, it's Evans Town Center with some additional things on top of it, uh, for lack of a, a way to put it.
And then lighting on that rear parking lot, I would think would shine back toward the center as opposed to back of the homes. Okay, those are our concerns. Thank y'all for y'all's time.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Anyone else that would like to speak to the board concerning this issue?
In Carrier, two oh-four Full Circle Drive. I'm gonna back, my backyard is gonna be there. How high are these buildings gonna be?
No, this has to come back before the board for approval, once, that, once the decision made on what will go there.
Okay, uh, and according to the plan, it says, uh, power lines a hundred and fifty feet, a hundred and twenty-five feet, and, but my understanding is they can put parking right up to it. Am I wrong or am I right?
As a setback, I don't know what it is. Do you, Mr. Sterling?
Any improvements, and I'll say that generously, any improvements that are done within the Georgia Power easement would have to be approved by Georgia Power. More than likely, uh, they have in some instances allowed parking underneath the, in the easements, um, but to Mr. Palladi's point as well, you know, the buffer requirements, you know, will require vertical landscape element to that, uh, so Georgia Power will be very keenly, uh, reviewing that as well. It may be, and, and again, this is a little premature to, to know exactly what the outcome will be, they may not allow any of that, so they may be completely outside of that. So that's part of the reason why the concept that you, or the, the layout that you see here tonight is not part of the approval process. It's a possible representation- It's a possible representation of what could occur, but certainly has not been fully vetted to fit on the site as approved under both our ordinances, but also through Georgia Power requirements. So simply is a request to change the zoning from R2 and C1 to, yeah, C1, I almost said C2, I knew that wasn't right, just to C1. The full design of that will yet to come if the rezoning is approved by not only the planning commission, but also the board of commissioners. The challenge of, you know, answering the questions of architectural materials and what they're going to look like and exactly, you know, the materials and all of that is a shade premature, but what we did in the staff report and recommendation to the board is, you know, include all of those elements that we believe will help address all of the concerns of residents around there.
I think it's green space. I step out my backyard, there's two hawk nests in those trees. Worried about them being destroyed, you know, they're beautiful birds, plus we have eagles flying by. Have they done a study on the wildlife that's going to be affected by this? How much green space is town of Evans is going to lose? We got construction, restaurants everywhere.
This, I wouldn't think there's been a study done concerning just that specific issue, but all that will be taken into effect when this plan gets more dignified to be returned. It's a, this is the first step of this piece of property being on commercial. All these other issues would come about in the future.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm saying is we're building, you know, when I first moved in down here from Buffalo, New York, I lived off Hardy McManus. Then I downsized to here. All of a sudden, boom, under construction because my division, nobody knew we were there.
But you have to realize that that property is not going to sit there indefinitely.
I understand that, but I'm saying just if they keep the buildings and the green space decent where it's not all tar and concrete, fine. But if they're building just to build, all of that will be addressed when they decide what will go there. And there has to be setbacks and there has to be all those types of things. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to speak on this issue?
Hey, good evening, my name's Audra Tiller. I'm at 508 Melton Road. I think I share some of the same sentiments of the previous gentleman. We do have concerns about extra cars on Evans to Locks. Also, you know, we have families that walk up and down, so extra cars and things like that are something that does concern us. We know that that property, like you just said, can't be natural forever, but we would prefer seeing something that was more residential versus commercial. Restaurants, shops and things like that just were not what we had envisioned when we moved to that particular area of Columbia County some years ago. So I do understand what you were saying, that this was just the first part, but we wanted to get out today and just have our voice heard that this is not something that we would like to see happen to Arlo area of Evans.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more questions? More comments from any of the staff concerning this? Like to entertain a motion to approve or disapprove of this issue, just that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 210606, zoning from R2 and C1 to C1 at 3950 Evans to Locks Road and Preakness Drive.
Second. All in favor of seating if I were raising your right hand. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Butler.
I'm serious, a request for rezoning from RA, Resident High Cultural to S1 Special, for existing bird rescue and expansion uses on the properties at 608 through, 608, 612 and 616 Bird Drive. Location of the property on the west side of Bird Drive, this kind of greenish colored part of the site is the city of Harlem. So they do a but the city of Harlem, that's why you're going to see on this one, you can kind of tell a little better. Again, everything around is a zone RA, you do have down Augusta Highway, some M1 as well. There's an aerial view of the site in these three properties we're looking at this evening. Also the plat of the properties and the site itself and the current site. So what we have, we're going to be kind of breaking this down into two different pieces. So we have, this is the current Feather Friends Forever site. Again, this shows the locations of most of the buildings on the site. Now, there's about 20 of them. List of uses, I mean, it's quite a few in terms of, you know, what they have on the site itself. Again, it's a bird rescue, so they do have some flight areas, they have areas for a tortoise that's under construction, but quite a few things, kind of an interesting site. We did, we did, we did do a, excuse me, a drone flyover of the site back in April to kind of get an idea of what is currently existing on the entire property. But in terms of that, to kind of take that as one piece of it, again, the request of the S1, we did not ask for an ASBIL of the property. That basically was probably too difficult to get within any kind of timeframe. Again, you have about 20 structures on the site. There is some additions to the site with a zip line at the back of the property and a caretaker's residence on the property. That's part of the request of the S1. In terms of kind of how to deal with that portion of it, we have a condition that basically states that anything that's currently existing on the site, we're not going to really worry about the setbacks, but they do replace it with the RA setbacks. So 608 was the other property here. That is where the bulk of the, you know, kind of the future development will be on the site. So kind of starting at the front, you have a parking lot that will be constructed, I have an existing mobile home. And behind that, you would have six tournament horseshoe pads. Also, you'd have a children's petting zoo kind of beyond that, an area for tiny houses on the site and at the back be a animal rehabilitation center. They also discussed having a vet on the site as well. Kind of an interesting amount of uses there. But again, things that are, you could see out in a rural area of the county, again, the townhouses are kind of a new idea. We do have a condition, the county does have requirements for townhomes specifically, that we do have a condition to speaking to that and also kind of providing a little bit more in terms of setbacks and buffers on all three of the properties, but especially on this one. Overall, in terms of the future land use, the site does meet that. Because again, this area is rural. It's been there for a while. Something that again, the uses while being commercial in nature, they fit within a rural area. The staff has recommended approval of the request, this shows future land use map. Just, the staff recommended approval of the request with following conditions. The first one, again, covers 612, 616, basically allows existing structures to remain and if they replace them, they had some ASBIL setbacks for RA. Along the backs of the properties, a 25 foot natural buffer. Any future development 608 Bird Drive, the landscaping requirements per Columbia County Code, you know, following, building setbacks will follow RA and buffer requirements will be C1. The pro tiny house community will develop following standards noted in chapter 54, Article 4. And tiny house law, it's going to be minimum 20 feet from the property line. And lastly is a combination plat for all three properties must be filed within 180 days of approval by the board of commissioners. That concludes staff recommendation.
Any questions of the staff? Would anyone like to come forward and speak on behalf of this issue?
My name is Ron Johnson. I am the CEO of Feather Friends. We've been in Columbia County 20 years. We're on Georgia Board of Tourism, Columbia County Board of Tourism. We're in Georgia, things to do and places to see. Our goal here is to improve for Columbia County more activities. We just finished a complete certified educational area from first grade through college. We have a federal registered monarch butterfly area at the front of the property. We have the only climate controlled bee house in the world on top of the parrots. We've brought in people from as far away as India, Australia, Alaska, and 46 states just to visit what we have there now. Our goal is to expand it further to give more people a better chance to get out and enjoy and of course, spend money in Columbia County.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak against this issue? Not as entertain a motion to accept or deny the issue?
Make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 607, zoning from RA to S1 for properties off Bird Drive.
Second. All in favor of seating if I were raising your right hand? Ms. Mystery?
Sir, this is a variance application for 3731 White Lane on .201 acres. The current zoning is R4 recreational residential. The existing use is residential and the request is a variance to reduce setbacks. This is the location of White Lane and the zoning, which is R4. Here's the aerial of the property, the plant. And a close of the plant, this is the existing house on here and it was built a long time ago and the 2019 variance application actually approved setbacks of eight feet and five feet on this property. Here's a side photograph of the existing house. And this is a proposed plan of the new house. So the previous application in 2019 approved the side and rear setback, which we keeping for this application also. The applicant, sorry, there was an error on the original, one of the original drawings that was not identified at the time. But since then, the applicant has sided on a new design for the proposed house. It's a single story home and this shows the setback in the front, the front setback encroachment of 22 feet into the 55 feet MBL. So the request is for front setback variance and staff is recommending that we allow the front setback to be 32 feet. That gives the contractor some space for tolerance. And due to the irregular shape of the lot, it's inevitable that variances would be required for a new home. The applicant has contacted the health department for septic tank regulations and they have approved it as well. Staff recommends approval of the variance with the condition that any accessory structure shall meet required setbacks.
Questions of the staff? Anyone like to speak for or against this issue?
731 White Lane, the 1985 double wide, it's literally fallen out from under our feet and so we're just trying to have a permanent nice looking structure to retire and live here. Put us in the ground.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Like to entertain a motion to accept or deny this very.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions. File VA 210603, reducing the front setback at 3731 White Road Lane.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of seating if I were your right hand? This concludes our business for tonight. Any, no legal matters, any of staff and comments made? Contain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second. Favor. Thank you for coming. Smooth and groovy. You're welcome.